Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi.
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 It's now seven o'clock regarding chapter two thirty-one P L nineteen seventy-five. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. This notice was on that date posted on bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Quarry News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tap into War, and Fallowship Clerk of the Township of Form, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. As Mr. Franco is so kind to provide a full plaque and background, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bishin. Mr. Brazee.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the March ninth, twenty twenty board meeting.
Second. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Did Mr. Bishi laugh on yet? No, okay. Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Abstain.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Correspondence and information. Mr. Mingle, Dr. Mingle.
So in the H I B section, we had two investigations at Central School. It was a conflict between two students. We investigated it from both perspectives, given the history between the students and some previous conflicts. Neither was found to be H I B, and that is all in that section.
Thank you. President's remarks. Good evening and welcome to this new format for our meetings until we can return to face-to-face meetings. We have completed week one of our new online teaching and working arrangement, and we started week two today. I want to thank and offer my praise for everyone that is helping to make the social distance successful. Teachers, administration, and other stuff, but most especially our students and parents. The transition to virtual teaching has presented us with numerous challenges, and we all continue to adapt with the changing circumstances. But the responsibility to educate children with help from the teachers remotely has been passed to parents, mostly moms, but also managing the household and often working other jobs. It is a tremendous undertaking, and we recognize and appreciate your efforts and patience. Each of us is doing our part in the whole plan to keep us and our loved ones safe from COVID-nineteen. I do ask everyone to continue practicing social distancing in all cases so that the disruption to our lives can be minimized to the shortest time as possible. Please avoid playdates and gatherings with friends and neighbors. Try to limit where possible the person coming into the houses, including babysitters. Avoid when possible unnecessary trips. As you look at the agenda, you can see that this is an extremely short agenda. We try to include only the most essential items. Other items that like to act upon, but that are not critical in the next weeks will be moved to future agenda. These include a new contract for the committee, the ongoing discussion of the appropriate years for comparative student achievement, or any other presentation. The hope is that these and other matters can be discussed in our normal, non-virtual setting. We continue to welcome your comments that will be read by Ms. Leonard at the appropriate time and hope that you, your children, and your families are being kept as safe as conditions allow. Dr. Mingle, for the administrator's remarks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. So I'll talk more specifically about where we are and where we're going next as far as COVID-nineteen response in the new business item, if that's okay, but just to reiterate your message about the meeting. Tonight was supposed to be a meeting at Central School. Obviously, our goal will be to reschedule those school-based meetings, if that's possible, before the end of the year, once we know when our return date is. Our next scheduled meeting is on Monday, April thirteenth, which would be the first day back to school under the current schedule. That's at A L T, I believe. You know, all of that will be as determined as we go forward. And again, we keep getting updated guidance about how to run virtual public meetings. The information, the way we're running tonight's meeting is based on what we had at the time we finalized the agenda. The new information will allow us to make improvements for April thirteenth, should that need to be virtual as well. I think that's it for right there, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, we have no presentation. We have no discussion. For the committee reports, do we have a committee report?
Yeah, from the Personnel Committee, we met with the Teachers Union last week on St. Patrick's Day. We did it also virtually, very much in the same way we're having this meeting. And I thought we actually made quite a bit of progress. We have another meeting scheduled for next week, and hopefully we can get even closer to a solution with them.
And if the board members have any questions, please speak out to any member of the personnel. Any other committee reports? Public commentary. We asked at the top of the agenda that public commentary is emailed at Ms. Leonard. Do we have public commentary for agenda items only at this time, Ms. Leonard?
We do not.
We do not. Thank you. Items for board consideration. Is there anyone that wants to pull out any of the items from the agenda, either for a separate vote or for a discussion?
Chris, it's Mark Bishy. I joined via phone. I'm not sure if just being on the phone is okay or not.
Yes, Mark. This is okay. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to pull out B two.
And I assume that for a separate vote.
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Zahn, you understood that B two.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to move agenda items A one, B one, and C one through three.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I would like to move agenda item B two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. DiMaggio. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Abstain.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, there was nothing. But on a new business, we added flexible instruction days for a discussion on, Mr. Oh, there's an English word. For discussion on the current situation. Anybody want to contribute?
Do you mind if I just give a quick overview first, Mr. Bellman?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So I know that obviously the board members have seen a lot of communication from me over the last ten days or so, but for the benefit of not only the people who are on the call for the board meeting, but also members of the public who will watch the recording afterwards, I thought a quick overview, very brief, of some key ideas might be helpful. And then there were a few questions sent in by board members that I can address as well. So first of all, the timeline of where we are is last week, our goal was to launch flexible instruction days and then triage whatever the major issues were. Some of that triage continues. Tomorrow at about one o'clock, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Kimmick and our technology department, volunteers from the Warren Township Office of Emergency Management will be hand-delivering fifteen additional Chromebooks to members of the community who, for one reason or another, are still having trouble being able to access flexible instruction. So I bring that up to point out that some of the very basic needs are still things that we're working on because the readiness of people and families, there's all kinds of different concerns that we have to address. This week, we're trying to transition from getting up and running into creating some sense of normalcy around the experience of what school looks like under these conditions. Next week, we will begin ramping up some training and support to staff if there's a movement from the governor or the commissioner to extend school closures, which seems fairly likely. And so we are already starting to have conversations right now about what does phase one point five of distance learning look like so that we're ahead of it. You know, basically what we told our staff before we went away last week was we're not going to do a whole lot of new teaching right now. We want to do the best we can to keep teaching and learning moving at some level and reviewing the material. That will have to change if this becomes a longer and longer term kind of an experience. So we're starting to talk about how we can embed some professional learning time and get staff trained up on things like synchronous and asynchronous video usage, that sort of thing. If this extent, then we would have spring break. If we don't come back right after spring break, we enter into that kind of new version, you know, weeks four and beyond of what does this look like? There are now several states that have extended all the way through the end of the school year, and should that become a reality, we have to be prepared for that as best we can. General overview of communications. Obviously, we're sending out daily briefings to our community and to our staff that are different. I give the board a summary of both of those things and any other key information. We have a weekly parent-student survey that goes out on Friday, and I did a weekly call starting last Friday. The feedback from the community has been exceptional about the benefit of seeing that kind of communication. We try to keep it no more than two pages. We'll try to get it down to one page as we move forward. But the survey questions have been very helpful in helping us prioritize which topics we should be focusing on. Clearly, the highest request from the community right now is to add in ways for better interaction between teachers and students or between students and students. We purposely didn't launch with that last week, but that'll be part of our next iteration. Just as an example, every one of those kinds of decisions winds up being a pretty extensive process. So adding asynchronous video to do it well, and under the guidelines of our current board policy and state law, means we have to take into consideration students who don't have media releases and what happens if somebody records that Zoom call, for example, and posts it somewhere. We have to think about families who might have concerns about their child being on camera with other people if they can't supervise it. We have to think about what happens when there are three or four children in one home using one or two devices, internet bandwidth issues for families, including staff members who may not have high-speed internet access, and on and on. You kind of get the idea. What we're doing at the leadership team level with our task force and with other groups is trying to carefully and methodically map out each of those big topics so that we're prepared for them when they come, what's most important. Video access was one of the things our community told us was most important, so that's a high on our priority list this week. We also know from our community, our parents, that time management and focus is a big concern right now as well. So especially in families where there may be parents trying to manage their own work responsibilities and supervise their children, or they have younger children, you know, toddlers in the home or whatever the other challenges might be. It's very difficult in a lot of homes to manage. It's causing social problems. It's causing family issues. And so we're trying to make sure we think about that through our counselors, and I'll address that more in a minute. And we're also concerned about long-term considerations. There are things we're doing right now in the short term just to get through each day, the way we're providing special education services, for example, which I'll go into. That will have to change as this becomes a two-month-long closure. Right now, there are new updates from the state every day. They're a little bit behind as they have to be just because of the nature of how things go. So we're constantly adapting, as is everybody else. Essentially, we've been trying to stick to using data to help us drive decision-making. So the survey results, and I would encourage parents to fill out those surveys when they come. I know you're getting a ton of email right now, but we try to keep it to two or three questions because that helps us know what people are thinking. To that point, we're trying to implement some of the recommendations that would have been in tonight's strategic planning presentation to the board now. So the two-way communication strategies we're using are not things we've typically done before. Having daily surveys where we're giving and receiving feedback and then immediately acting on it is new. That's partially a way of trying to implement the voice and engagement pillar. Equity and consistency means that before we fully launch something like video-based instruction, that our teachers have been trained in how to do it well so that it's consistent in all classrooms across the district. As a result, some things are happening slower than others. But I would say that after day six today of this reality, we should all be very proud of what our teachers, our students, our parents, as Mr. Bellman said, are accomplishing. And finally, a couple of questions that I received ahead of time that I'd like to address. One was about how is the district addressing the needs of students with I E Ps? Right now, the guidance we have from the state has a little bit of a mix depending on what aspects of an I E P you're talking about. So we have staff members who are responsible for meeting things like providing support to children, redirection, that sort of thing. That happens between nine A M. and one P M., whether that's for general education, special education, what have you. Students who get related services like speech or occupational therapy, physical therapy. There are limits in state guidelines about exactly what that can and can't look like. There are limits in the licensing rules that apply to how you become a physical therapist, for example. There are opportunities potentially through agreements with families to adjust I E Ps to meet those requirements temporarily. There are longer-term considerations depending on how long this takes. If we were out for the rest of the school year or even for another month, we might have to think about expanding our extended school year programs, which would cost money to run a more robust compensatory program for students who missed it. Mr. Ressa is working through our county special services directors, through our legal counsel, to make sure that we do as much as we can remotely, as much as we can legally do remotely. There is pending legislation that may have already passed the legislature on the governor's desk to give us way more flexibility in meeting so that our, for example, our physical therapists, although they can't physically be in the room with the child, can be in some kind of a video conference and help them through that. Our I E P meetings are continuing as scheduled. We've already done several I E P meetings, which helps us stay on track with the timelines in the law. One unmet area of concern in area of special education is that this also, you have to think about not only our students who are in our in-town schools on a daily basis, but our students who are in out-of-district private placements for severe special needs are also at home with their families. And no parent has the special training to be able to handle certain needs that kids have. And so there's obviously a significant concern there about the long-term consequences. That's on the radar. There's not a lot we can do right this second, but that is one of the areas of concern for sure on the special education side. And a related question to that is, how are we following up with kids that we know we have concerns about beyond special education? So students who might be at risk. Our counselors are working, our nurses are working, and we're doing a lot of one-on-one calls to those families. We have limitations that we're working on as far as one-on-one when it's with a child regarding whether there's an adult present besides the staff member for protection of both parties, which presents some problems when you think about some of the most at-risk, which might include things like students who may have reported a concern about abuse. And how do we make sure that we're following up with kids in situations like that in a way that protects them but also doesn't violate their parents' rights about how we do that? That's very tricky, but that is on our radar as well. I don't have a great answer right this second for how well we can do that, but we do have procedures in place for identifying in not only the survey data, but just through our regular counselor workloads, students or families where we need to make a personal phone call and try to gauge what's going on. So that is on the radar as well. Any concerns about bullying situation, about an abusive situation? All of the regular laws are applicable right now, meaning our staff members are reported mandatory reporters or going through D C P M P or to administration, depending on what the situation is. So it is a, this is one of those areas where we don't know what we don't know until we are here and living it, and we're trying to find what the right solutions are. At the county level, I'm on calls almost every other day at this point with all the county superintendents. Those calls are now running against all recommendations for virtual meetings, two or three hours long sometimes because we have such a long list of not just the day-to-day operational things, but you know, what happens if this is two and a half months? What does that mean for summer construction projects? What does that mean for spring sports, the seventh and eighth grade trips? And on and on and on. You know kind of the whole gamut there. So with that, Mr. Bell, I'll turn it back over. I'll take any questions. People can have discussion, of course, as a new business item.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle, for this really extensive overview of what's happening and what the plans are. I want to open up to the board. Are there any questions?
I had a question. Thank you. Matt, just I'm wondering how, because I imagine everyone is dealing with similar issues. Are you all having conversations beyond the county level? Like, how much are all the districts helping each other in the state?
So generally speaking, it's at the county level because that's, everybody's established new communication structures to respond. So our avenue to any state agency is through our county superintendent.
Okay.
Our county superintendent, who used to be the county superintendent in Morris County as well. So he tends to share things back and forth. So we're seeing, so there is a lot of sharing going back and forth, but generally speaking, it's at the county level.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Just a quick comment, if I may. So I know as a parent, we're certainly getting the information that Dr. Mingle had mentioned, and I think that all the parents are seeing. But as a board member, I think it's been spectacular to be overly communicated. So thank you, Dr. Mingle, for that. Every day we get our update, and there's, I have no questions, which is, you know, for me to be speechless is something else. So thank you for that. It is much appreciated to keep us informed of exactly what's going on. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bishy. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Please, please.
How's all our staff doing, Dr. Mingle?
Yeah, thank you. So one of the questions we ask the staff every day is a how are you doing question. It's three various, I think I share that in my board update. It has hovered in the eighty percent, I'm doing fine, with the next level being I'm stressed, but I'm okay. We did have one staff member indicate I need support on Thursday of last week. And the way that process works is we, you know, first thing in the morning, I review all those results. We tag anything that needs to be addressed, and then there are personal phone calls wherever there are individual concerns. So our staff is generally doing well. The comments they're putting in, you know, are things like, right now, I'm doing the best I can to stay afloat. If this becomes two months, we need to address this, 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 and this. Our staff has been phenomenal to this point, as have our parents. The parent feedback was extremely positive, and even when there were recommendations, it was, people would say things like, last week was great for what you had to pull off. Please start thinking about this, this, and this. We are also talking administratively. You know, we've had a lot of one-on-one check-ins between principals and staff members. Our leadership team has regular calls like this so that we can see each other and talk as well. So it seems like people are doing well. Now, we all know that if this continues to get worse, as the numbers continue to go up, sooner or later, we're going to have people personally affected. And that may lead to us needing to rely on buddy teachers or buddy administrators to pick up the slack for somebody who can't work. That kind of thing might happen in a classroom as well. So there are challenges to come there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
If there aren't, I could throw out a couple more things real quick. I don't mean to take too much of your time, but.
No, this is very important. Please go ahead, Dr. Mingle.
I suspect that the next time we meet, there will be some pretty significant topics that may even be executive-level topics, but I want to mention now, I'm not going to say anything now that would be protected. But there's a lot of discussion, not only at the county, but at the state, about things like, which vendors do you keep paying and which ones don't you keep paying? And do you honor contracts? Because there are state laws that say if you don't receive the service, you don't pay the contract. But there are other contractual languages about, contractual language, excuse me, about fulfilling a years-long contract with, you know, certain kinds of vendors. As we get legal guidance, we will make sure you're all well-informed, and through some committees, we might have to start playing out some scenarios so that we can talk about it as a full board. There's also things that we expect the state to come down with that they have not yet. So despite popular understanding that standardized testing has been canceled, that is not actually true. So although there was a comment made in a presidential press briefing, until the state of New Jersey applies for a waiver and has granted it, there is still standardized testing. We expect that it's going to go away, but I don't want people to think that it already did. There's a lot of process stuff that has to happen. Teacher evaluation law will have to change for us to be able to finish this school year. There are all kinds of questions about things like summer fun and timing with that. So I just want on your radar to be aware that I'll start putting some of that in our briefings as we get more information. Mrs. Lenhart, Mr. Kimmick, Mr. Ressa, we're on calls and all the time on these topics. Legal guidance depends right now totally on which law firm you call because nobody has ever dealt with this before. And so we want to be careful not to be the first ones out there in front. We want to learn from the state and other districts and then make really well-informed decisions.
I do have a question. We're not locked down on next year's budget yet. Do we anticipate in light of current events that we maybe need to revisit certain assumptions we made in building that budget?
Mrs. Lenhart, do you want to start that one?
Is she there?
I think she's frozen or she's.
Her video looks.
I am sorry. I muted myself.
No problem.
But you missed it. So Dr. Mingle and I have discussed this, and it's a little challenging to identify right now. I think we have had to, we've reassessed our technology. Generally speaking, our technology has stood the test of time, the test of this test. Hard to see.
Pat, you're frozen. Am I the only one not able to hear her?
No.
She jinxed it when she said technology.
Oh, no.
I don't really know.
Sorry.
I could summarize some because we've had the conversation. So, you know, some of the assumptions about things like insurance are hard to know at this point. There's rumors, there's rumors that I've never heard from any official source, but people have asked me about with state aid. There is no indication from the governor or the commissioner that anything is changing about state aid figures for next year. But there certainly, once the implications are known, there, you know, who knows? There might be workers' comp cases, which make workers' comp rates change, you know. Right now, it's hard to say. We do have almost a month. We have, you know, our meeting to approve the budget is the second April meeting. It's hard to predict what happens in the next month, whether or not we need to look at it.
I raised this because we recently made the decision to take this year's state aid number, which was generous, and put that into capital reserve, a move I generally support. But once it's in capital reserve, it's not available. once it's in capital reserve, it's not available as a cushion against any other unexpected items that result from this circumstance. So I'm, I'm wondering if that is a the use of the state funds in that way is something we may want to rethink.
But we can also use the allocation from the end-of-year monies for that, I assume, to have some flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we provide adequate flexibility for the unknown, which at this point is everything, probably, but we can always, if we, we build the budget in ways that don't go to capital reserve this year, presumably that would be available next year for an even larger end-of-year number contributed to capital reserve a year out, but to allocate it there now locks it in. And I'm just wondering if, if that's something we want to rethink. Hearing nobody. Is anyone speaking?
We do have a finance committee meeting on April 20th, I believe, which is the week before than the official budget. It's not, as, as you know from the past, we don't love making changes at the 11. Time would at least allow us to change all the official documents.
Yeah. All right. Just wanted to put that on everyone's radar.
Thank you.
Most flexibility. I know at my work, we've been planning scenarios for next year of 10 to 30% cuts if we had to face things like that. So it's, it's definitely on our, like at my work's radar that 21 is going to look pretty nasty and that there might be, well, we have different, we're very dependent on, but I mean, there's lots of rumors that there might be even property tax, like what do you call it, like delays and things like that, too. So.
Well, we all have budget buddies, and there's a budget meeting April 20th. Perhaps this is an opportunity, since we're all here, for everyone to reach out. And before the April 20th meeting, you know, walk into that meeting with some sense from the other board members where people's heads are at. Just a thought.
I have a question for the administration. Report cuts are supposed to come out later this week. I assume this is still the plan?
Yes. So this is one of those very long conversations. That seems like it should be an easy one. So the answer is yes, report cards are progressing as scheduled. Don't worry about how this notches got, they will, they will, you will get report cards as scheduled. Thank you to Mr. Kimmick and our staff.
Anything to add? Any question, comment?
I have a question. Dr. Mingle, so you're at the board office. Are you, how is this? Are you allowed to be there because you're our CEO of our company of Shining Brighter Every Day? Or do you go in the office every day? Or I don't, I'm worried for you.
No, I don't go in the office every day. I'm the, so according to the guidelines, until 6:30 this afternoon, a virtual meeting, there had to be somebody present in case members of the public wanted access. Now, that changed right before the meeting, and Mrs. Lenhart jokingly texted me and told me to get home as fast as I could, but I'm here in case anybody from the public wanted to come to a public meeting. But no, we are all working from home. We do have essential staff, though. I mean, we do have security staff, maintenance staff, just walk into buildings to make sure on a, now they're doing it in isolated fashion. But a lot of districts around here have dealt with some pretty significant vandalism in the last week, as people know that their facilities, which is just, just awful. So we do have some essential staff in district doing those kinds of, but no. Thank you for your concern.
Sure.
Anybody else?
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
No, no, there is public commentary on any.
Look at that. I'm so anxious to get out of here. My apologies.
Sorry. Ms. Leonard.
Yes, I have a letter from Ms. Melinda Beriso. Dear Mrs. Lenhart, is there a way for us to livestream the upcoming Board of Education meeting that is scheduled to take place on March 23rd, 2020 due to the Corona's, but coronavirus limitations and for broader community participation? I had on behalf of the board responded to that portion of Ms. Beriso's email. The email goes on to say, also, I had a question regarding the budget. According to the 2019-20 budget, user-friendly on the Warren Boe website, the first line item on page seven states that there is an estimated balance of 862,153 under the category unrestricted general operating budget. What are those funds being set aside for? And could they be allocated toward enrichment programs, athletics, field trips, et cetera, at a later date? I believe the Boe will be voting on the budget prior to the strategic plan. And the strategic plan calls for some expansion of certain programs. Could these funds be released and used at a later date, even if the budget has already been approved? Or would the community have to wait until the 2021-22 school year to have more programs implemented? Thinking ahead, I, these questions were provided to Mr. Bellman, so that if he wanted to respond.
Sure, yes. So the $862,153 that you note for the 1920 budget that represents an estimate of the monies the district might have as of June 30, 2019, for the undesignedated fund balance. These monies are kept at 2% of the general fund and are the only reserve the district is allowed to maintain for unforeseen expenses. You also mentioned that these monies could be used for other items. And given both the change of the schedule for presentation of the strategic plan due to the pandemic and the statutory deadline for adoption of the 2021 budget, it is correct that the board must approve the budget prior to the adoption of the strategic plan. But our board can approve the transfer of funds throughout the year for the needs identified after the budget adoption. That means if our strategic plan needs any funding, we can transfer items from the existing budget. And as we already indicated in the discussion before, there is definitely some impact on the budget from the current situation. And in an upcoming finance meeting, we'll discuss that further. And once we approve the final budget, we should have more comment into how that is impacting and what we're doing. Was there any other communication from members of the public?
There was not. Let me just check my email one last time. No.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leonard.
That is all.
This is soon. Could you please?
My pleasure. Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. DiMaggio, do you second?
I second. Yes, I second. I was rushing to get my mood off.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you all for your help and your care.
Thank you very much.
Yes, be well, everyone.
Hola.
Hola. Why is your house so quiet?
Why what?
Why is your house so quiet?
Uh, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. That's a good question.
That means Christine is tied up and in the closet. Go help her.
Either that, or she busted out the ice cream. One of the two.
Nice, nice.
Oh, I think this is still getting recorded. We should stop.
Okay.
It's okay, Brenda, we don't see you. See you later.
Bye.
Bye.